I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the Chelsea Troy Township School Corporation Regular Meeting of the Board of School Trustees Tuesday, August 12th. All members are present. Adoption of the agenda Tuesday, August 12th. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there any discussion?
Before the board votes, I'd like to switch the order of the agenda. Items A and B just reversed.
That is on the back of that one.
Well, no, we're not going to add them. I just want to take item B first.
That's on that. 1028 goes to B.
Correct.
Second preliminary goes to A.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Shoddo.
Thank you.
There is no other changes, all is in favor of adoption of the agenda. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Reports, Alexa.
Hello.
Hello.
It's going really well. It's been very busy. Everything's been great. We had a really great turnout for our kindergarten orientation and back-to-school cookout. Very successful. A lot of families there, a lot of vendors. I think it was really good for the community and for the kids. Another thing, we are changing our car router system. Some of you may have heard about that. A little rocky in the beginning. We've gotten it down really good. It's, I think, the first day, we got out there at like 3:40. We've got it down to 3:05. So we've got the kids getting out of there and it's a lot safer. The kids are inside. They're not sitting out on the sidewalk. Parents aren't getting out of vehicles. Parents are able to stay in the car. Teachers are helping students get into the car and it's just a lot safer process. And it's going really smooth. See, we've got Danny Boland coming to take pictures of our school for the billboard that we're doing. So just getting some pictures of students doing fun, positive things to promote our school and our district. Besides that, I think that's pretty much all we got right now. But everything's off to a great start.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, Chelsea Junior Senior High School.
Good afternoon. Great start of the year. I was telling, so I think this is the first time in thirty-something years that I can remember that we haven't hired anybody. That's a plus. It feels nice, right? It feels good. Great start. Thank you to the bus drivers, especially Bus 10. The cafeteria, everybody. It takes so much behind the scenes that people don't realize with the construction. Our custodians, we come in early, getting things done. We think they get into the cafeteria and somebody fall, right? To wax the floors. They got that down. I mean, I think John Kaitman will cooperate, right? Do that. I really appreciate it. It takes a lot of, well, actual assistance and just as a whole. And I need to say thanks to everybody. Just, sorry. Right now, we're sitting at 630 kids, which is like a pretty solid number. I think we're up a little bit right now. We have six enrolled full-time on our online. Three are just new students.
Yes, yes.
Three are new students. Three students that were going to leave and go somewhere else. And Chris went through the doors and said, hey, we've got this great program. So, and that, shout out to Chris because he contacted every parent. Everybody that left us, either go to Calton Online or other store line and said, hey, this is what we're starting. So that's six kids, right? And maybe more. So we have, I think, I counted that a total of thirty kids on combination of Apex and both. Those are the kids also that maybe they want their classes in a different schedule or they want to take something that we don't offer. So, except a great start. Everything is going well. Looks like the members are pretty solid right now and six enrolled. We'll see how it goes. Obviously, that number will probably go up here, you know, here this year. Especially this close to the end of the semester, the second semester. But we have the option and see how it goes so far. Questions?
The six that are enrolled full-time online, are they included in your 630 total?
Yes, yes, yes. So, yeah. But it's better than, you know, I think we eight-five percent, right? It's better than being nothing, right? So, you know, we're trying. And again, like I said, Chris reached out to, you know, that everybody went to Calton and other places and that's most of his fact. But thank you, sir.
Report from my county, read of all the commission. Good news for local industry. We, the redevelopment commission from the redevelopment authority accepted all of the ground that Wapaka was originally bonded on. I believe in ninety. Saying that right, not cheating. Turned it all over to Wapaka. All of them, they even got the landed buildings on that. So that was kind of a good deal to release all that and that's in anticipation of all the bonds that are being paid off. So that's, that's good news. As we discussed, potentially throwing seventy-two million dollars worth of assessed valuation with their bonds being paid off into Troy Township. That's a big deal. We hope to see the fruits of all that work and come down, trickle down through the system to the taxpayers and all the other tax. Also, we sold two more lots in the Forest Cam subdivision. See construction starting on them two houses now. It's over half the lots have been sold now. Again, we've increased the AV there approximately six million. All good. It's good things. That's all I have from the redevelopment commission. No communication from the public? Nope. The consent agenda, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Shoddo. Is there any discussion? Things there is, and all is in favor of accepting the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Old business on new business.
As we ask the new business, we're going to start with the second preliminary determination hearing. Mr. Thomas?
The next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a preliminary hearing on the proposed project. If you are interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet. And I do not wish anybody to sign the sign-in sheet during this hearing.
We'll check again when you finish.
Okay. At the front room, sign the sign-in sheet at the front room, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to five minutes and the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. Note that the notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. At this time, I would ask that both continue to explain the purpose of this hearing.
Hey, good evening. My name is Brenda DeBree and I'm an attorney at Rose McKinney Hennings. I am filling in for Jacob McClellan, who's been working with the school on this project and our role as we serve as bond counsel for this financing. So pursuant to Indiana Code, Section 6, 1.1, 20, 3.5, a school corporation needs to hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution on the preliminary determination to issue bonds or interim to release for which a project of a total project cost in excess of a non-controlled project threshold. So the public hearings that you did, that we're doing tonight and the adoption of the related resolution, which is in front of you, is the very beginning of this legal process. There's also a timetable in front of you this evening and I'll hit the high points on that. The resolution will establish the maximum financial terms for the proposed project. They're just maximum parameters are not to exceed. The school will work with the financial advisory team to determine the exact amount of bond that will be issued. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at those numbers, that they're not to exceed parameters. Also, I wanted to mention that statutorily required information for purposes of this project and financing is located over there next to the sign-in sheet if anyone is curious. If there's no questions so far, I'll go ahead and hit the high points of the, of the timetable. Today is the second public hearing on the preliminary determination and it's also the public hearing on the 1028 notice. So after we get through all of this, we will schedule a public hearing on the lease amendment and submit a notice of preliminary determination on the project to the paper later this week. So that will run and advance to your next meeting. The building corporation will, in the future, vote and they'll meet to approve a lease amendment for purpose of this financing. The school board will also hold a public hearing on a lease amendment in the future and then that amendment will be executed at a later point as well. That will also kick off another legal notice, lots of legal notices as part of this project. And the building corporation and the school board will have authorizing resolutions for the project that they will adopt later in October, November. The financing will work to prepare the official statement, obtain a rating, and it all goes according to plan, which we anticipate that it will. In late November, the bonds will be sold and we'll work towards the closing in mid-December. So we've got other members of the financing here to answer questions as well. That might come up today. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Superintendent Shoddo about the process of determining the scope of the project and the need for this project.
So not all of you were on the board in 2021 when we did the feasibility study through an architectural firm. But we had some group come in and look at our entire facility system, top to bottom. And, and, you know, we keep talking about the new elementary school. It's now twenty-six years old and the HVAC that's there. And we also have to look at, you know, do our facilities meet all of our current needs? And right now, what we're hearing is that we, we need some more space to participate with activities for PE or gym space to allow community to come in. We have several community groups that use our facilities and there's a lot of struggling to get into and utilize our facilities. We also want to upgrade our facilities and make sure that we're offering the best possible education and opportunity to our students. So to do that, we're proposing to build an auxiliary gym and weight room to facilitate that here at the high school. And I would point out that this will help bring us back up to where we were. When the junior high was closed, we lost a gym in that process. So we didn't lose any sports. We have nineteen sports, but we lost a gym. So this will get us back that gym and it will give us one more place that we can, we can utilize for our students. This bond would also be utilized for HVAC upgrades. We've got some chillers here. We've got twenty-five-year-old HVAC equipment at the high school or at the elementary. And all these things are listed in, in the long-term plan that we did. So we're following along with the long-term plan to, to keep the place up and running in great shape for years to come. And once again, we've issued these so that they fall off in ten years and we can continually be doing these projects and making sure we're staying ahead of the curve. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Shoddo. We will now hear from London Reed on municipal, our municipal advisor on how the proposed project will be financed as well as information about the effect on the property tax owner.
So as Brenda had hit, the project will be financed through the building corporation with a, with a lease rental revenue bond. From a levy standpoint or a lease standpoint, the bonds will be structured to take advantage of your other bonds, your 2004 and 2011 bonds as they pay off to keep your levy constant. So from a taxpayer's standpoint, we'll make sure to keep your tax rate either level or it will continue to drop. So from increasing taxes, any net impact will be, you know, increases on taxes. On the other note, your certified AVs have come out for pay 26. You're looking at a 6.8% increase. This, I don't know if the board has. New that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually just saw it today before I was coming down here. So the numbers that you're seeing here don't even take to reflect to that. So it's good, we actually, we actually dropped this individual structure very good as constant as possible. The parameters that you see in front of you, that's for $11 million bond, seven percent interest rate, those are worst-case scenarios. We were talking, from my understanding, we're looking at about a million-dollar project. We'd probably be looking at more at 5% interest rate. But for the purpose of these parameters and these notices now, we'd like to kind of do, you need to do a worst-case scenario. So if something goes wrong, so let's say the market changes today and rates go up to six, six and a half percent. You want to make sure that your resolutions cover that or vice versa. If your bids come in larger and your project grows a little bit, you want to make sure that you have the capacity to do a little bit more and don't have to, you don't have to concern progress or the steps that we've already taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We have nobody on the list to speak. We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you'd like to speak, please sign in on the sign-in sheet. Does anybody wish to speak? I made that part very easy. If no one wishes to speak, then positive or negative toward this bond issue, we will close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a 1028 hearing on the proposed project. Again, if you're interested in speaking, please sign in on the sign-in sheet. I note that the notice of the 1028 hearing was published as legally required. At this time, I will ask Jacob McClellan, Jacob got here, right? I seen Jacob.
Sorry.
Propose McKinney to explain the purpose of this here.
Good evening again. This is Brenda DeBree filling in for Jacob McClellan. Lots of meetings tonight. I know, we should have updated a few things. So pursuant to Indiana Code, Section 20-26-7-37, a school corporation needs to hold a public hearing, present the potential value of the proposed project and consider the impact of the proposed bond issuance when a school corporation undertakes a proposed project that will cost more than a million dollars and will be financed with bonds that are payable from property taxes. So that's why we have to have the 1028 hearing tonight at this meeting for that purpose, which is part of the Indiana Code. So the resolution in front of you, it's the same resolution. Both the preliminary determination findings and the 1028 findings are included in the same, there's just one resolution in front of you. So it's required to reference the educational purpose that the project will serve, which the, Mr. Shoddo hit on already, explained, and the estimated cost of the project, which also Bob referenced, and any other pertinent information, including the impact on the tax rate of their proposed source of the financing. So these items are all covered in that resolution in front of you and they've all been discussed previously and then also again tonight. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. If not, I'll pass it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Does anybody need to hear again the layout and need for the project? I explained it earlier, if I understand. Again, we will open this meeting up for public comment. No one has signed up for that. Thank you all for coming. I know you came a long way for that, but it's what we have to do. Does anyone have anything in the audience that would like to make a comment on this project? I know you're not signed up, but I would ask if you have any comments on it. Okay. We will now close this public hearing. Thank you all so much. Be safe going home.
Hopefully, I'll wait and tell me to do the resolution.
That's the next thing on the agenda.
Okay, board. Adoption of the resolution, preliminary determination, respect of the lease financing of the project. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ross. Is there any other discussion from the board on that?
This has been shared with you now a few times, what we read through on the, or the August 5th meeting. It's the symbol that was presented here. If you all are in agreement and vote yes, then the passes are only assigned so that they can take off.
Any discussion from you? Are you comfortable? If so, all those in favor of the adoption of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Blue tab, please. It'll take just a minute to get the signs so they can start their three-hour trip back.
You can have those signed, one for you and one for me.
I was going to wait and sign mine later, get you gun, on the road. They have a bunch of stuff to sign for me later anyway, so.
Just one more, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for coming down. Appreciate it. We'll be in touch soon. Thanks. Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda, William Tell Elementary School. We have several things going on.
We have several positions. Mr. Ramsey was kind of rubbing it in when he said he didn't have anybody to hire over the summer because Miss Hawthorne has been busy. We would like to recommend Lisa Perkheiser as evening custodian. She's actually been on with us since mid-July. We brought her in, so I'm actually about to be retroactive. We picked her up right after the last board meeting. Misty Parr for the five-and-a-half-hour cafeteria position. Megan Owen for the five-and-a-half-hour daycare assistant position. Ms. Park is asking to transfer into the PE position that Mr. Hendrickson vacated. And Ms. Brunner, we are recommending for second-grade teacher. Carrie Fisher has agreed to serve as morning supervisor, that's an ECA. For On Target, Brittany Leatherland, Emily Beebe, Patricia Glenn are looking at adult online, On Target supervisors. And for student supervisors, we have Leila Poole, Thailin Leatherland, Tiana McNally, McAlley, Alana Cole, Isabella Krang, Tanner Franzman, and Levi Edwards. So we ask for your approval on that group of folks tonight. Is Mrs. Brunner backfilling Ms. Park's position? Yes, that is correct. So she would take the second, second grade position where Emily is vacating. Make a motion to approve these William Tell elementary school positions.
Thank you. There is no other discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five. Falcetti Junior Senior High marching marksman volunteers.
We have several volunteers to recommend for the marching marksman. Candy Foster, Sarah Pickens, Katie Edwards, Michelle Grundy, Andrea Roberts, Ari Darty, Tiffany Moore, and Auburn Allen. Free and Bold are not employees, so you've got their background checks, everyone else on our stuff. So ask for your approval there.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the.
Any discussion on these individuals?
Free and Bold with their parents?
Yep. Any other? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Athletics.
We have just a couple of recommendations for athletics. Varsity assistant softball coach Chloe Caron and volunteer assistant cross-country coach Krista Angel. Ask for your approval on those ladies tonight.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve athletic recommendations.
Okay, any other discussion? Things there is, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries five.
Bus drivers. As you know, we had two employees retire from bus driving positions this summer and we would like to replace the bus nine route with Nancy Harding. She's subbed for us quite a while, does a great job for us, and we'd appreciate that recommendation. The next one is our special needs route. And this one carries our special needs students and our preschool students and it's an all-day because we have AM and then noon pickups and drop-offs and it's PM. So it's, it's an all-day position. We are recommending Jessica Elder. Now, she does not have a CDL yet. She has agreed to get it. We are like everywhere else in desperate need of bus drivers. So what I'm asking the board to consider with this vote is to let her sign the agreement that I provided in your board packets that's spelled out a timeline and a list of expectations for her to receive it. And then we would pay her to be a transportation assistant and a bus aide while she's learning to get her CDL. And Mark has said he can expedite that process and then she would take over as bus driver when she completes it.
She can't really drive a bus, she doesn't get it.
Correct.
Who would drive it?
We have several subs that are piecemealing it together. Yeah, right now, we've got, I think, three different drivers that have picked up a part here and there.
I said, Mark said, expedite process. Give me timeline, one week, two weeks.
We think we can do it in two months. We, there's a, there's a training that they have to go to, a three-day training that's mandatory for all CDL holders. And that's going to be in October. Don't hold me to that, but they, they only have them certain times in certain places. In the meantime, she's already gotten to the B&amp;B and gotten the booklet to learn how to do all those things. So she seems like she's ambitious for them to pull this off. I think we can, we can safely say that in a couple of months, she'll have her CDL. Is an activity bus an option?
That's a, thank you, Ross. That was the next question. What is the difference between a special needs bus and an activity bus?
So our.
Size, right?
No. Our, our special needs bus is actually, I believe, about a thirty-two passenger, but it has a wheelchair lift. So that if we have students that are in need of that, we put them up on and they have buckles that lock the wheelchair into place. We can use an activity bus in a pinch, as long as there's a driveway. The rule is for an activity bus is you have to pull off the main road because there's no stop on, no flashing lights. So we cannot deliver a student to the corner of Third and Main. So this, it's why we need a CDL driver for this route.
If we're not in the future looking, can you modify an activity bus with a stop on?
Then it becomes a school bus and requires a CDL.
So for my learning purposes, the only difference between an activity bus and a regular school bus is the stop on. Even though we drive wave father with a busload of kids on an activity bus, that seems like.
But you're always pulling off the main road, so there's never a time when you should be stopping. There's no alert lights. There's no, I mean, an activity bus doesn't have the tops and the bottoms. It doesn't have the flashing arm that sticks out. So, and it's not bright yellow.
So school buses don't even have to stop at three more courses.
They do stop at road or a crossroads. They do have to do that. But they don't have the flashers and all those things.
Yeah. It's amazing that to me that we transport children, a lot farther than an activity bus to be on a school bus.
Correct. The risk is dropping shit off in the middle of the street.
Which we wouldn't do.
Correct.
I could see somewhere in a pinch that we would have to set up drop zones and use one.
We use an activity bus, so we have some students that qualify as homeless or are assigned to people that live outside of the district for TCS reasons. And we'll use an activity bus to run them door to door because it's not feasible to run a bus route all the way out there. So we, there's a lot of uses for the activity buses, unfortunately, we can't just use them for everybody. Thanks for that.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to exempt these two bus drivers from, just to get their CDL eventually.
Thank you.
There is no other discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries five to zero. Overnight trip across country.
Mr. Holland and the cross-country teams are requesting to attend the Invitational at Columbus North High School. This is a pretty annual thing and due to the distance and start time, it requires an overnight stay. They will take activity buses with a form of parking lot and the students will cover the cost of the hotels. I recommend for a purpose trip.
When is this trip, September 14th?
It's.
September 14th.
Thank you.
Building, sorry.
No, it's okay. I didn't put, it's on the, it's on the request, it's included in the packet.
Make a motion to approve overnight passenger trip.
Thank you, Eric.
There's no other discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five. We have three buildings used permits. One of them is for profit, the other ones are not. You've got to check them out once, and now it's more than one building.
Over, you'd like to see.
The same, not, but, 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 purple profits.
Sure. So the for-profit is Sammy J Studios. They're requesting building use for the auditorium backstage area for a dance recital. backstage area for a dance recital, they are charging, they will be charged for building use and custo- custodial services if they are used, that is December the 20th, we verified that it is available, and they did prevent, present their certificate of insurance, so I recommend the board approve their request.
I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve that request.
Any other discussion? There is none, all those in favor approving it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five. We'll do J and K, they are both non-for-profits.
Correct. Two not-for-profits are the Oaks Transitional House, Angela Howland is requesting use of the auditorium and stage area for a comedy fundraiser, they did this last year also, you might remember that, it is a not-for-profit, and they have provided the certificate of insurance, and I didn't put the date on this one, it's included in the holding each form, but I did check up the high school, and the date is brief, so I recommend the board approve that.
Any discussion on this, we're going to combine J and K, it's one button.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lacy Jones and the United Way, I gotta edit myself because I was looking for a date. The United Way is requesting to do their version of our lip sync contest, and they're requesting building use to hold that September 26th and 27th. They are a not-for-profit also, and I recommend that you approve that request.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve J and K.
Thank you, Ross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five.
So we just finished the updates for the first part of the year, and as soon as you guys approved those, we received the legal updates for all the changes that have been made to the state laws, that's what you've been provided for first read here, uh, it's changes to curriculum, audio/video recording, reproductive health, student privacy, student assessments, attendance, of course, is a big one that everybody's been talking about, all of those changes are now reflected in your yellow policies that you have provided a couple of weeks ago to review, this is first read and open for discussion, we'll bring them back in September, if the board chooses to approve them, they'll go into policy effect. Any questions on the policies as of right now?
They touched every hot button?
They tried.
They did.
They tried.
I don't have any opinions.
Okay, well, we will bring them back next month for second read and approval.
Next item, construction updates from Universal Design Architects.
So you have in your packets the engineer's field reports on the progress that's been made by U D A, or by the roofing company, and as you can see, there's still artwork right now, uh, they've moved on to the concrete section, which is the concrete roof above, the cafeteria is the old part of the high school, that's getting 24 inches of insulation on top of it, and they have to glue all that down, and then that gets compressed, and then the rubber on its top goes on. That slowed them down a little bit, and said, once they get down to this point, we're back onto the wood, and that just gets screwed in, so it'll go much quicker once it gets past this part. We did, I will, in your, at your desks when you came in, uh, I had a couple of things from U D A, but I also included the mold remediation report, we did not have mold, uh, we brought in Surf Pro to ensure that everything was cleaned up properly from when the roof did leak, we got that back from the microbiologist, and we got a clean bill of health, so they said that our indoor air quality was actually lower than the outdoor particles that you go out and breathe outside, so, Surf Pro did a great job, and we're very happy that they were able to come in and help us out through that situation. Most of the inside has been cleaned back up, ceiling tiles are back in place, there's still some paint and some little things that need to go on, and there's some work in the auditorium, but we held that back until after the play was finished, and then they can come in and they can fix the walls in the auditorium and those types of things. But the big thing is the air quality is good, and that's, I was happy to see that before.
And all Surf Pro's parts recovered that concrete?
Correct, correct, that was all taken care of by the contractor. So, roof is progressing as they expected, though, we're in good shape there.
Did you expect it?
No, there was a, there was a little bit of a elevation difference that they didn't account for, uh, they didn't realize when they took that off, so they, they've got a little bit of a change order in for that, but it was a substantial amount of money.
They're going to find, start to open themselves.
Right.
They have that hard board up there, back that deep.
Yeah.
To get that up as well, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
What's their best estimate now, when they get it done?
I haven't gotten an estimate on when it's going to be done, uh, the concrete has really slowed them down a lot, and the weather isn't helping any at all, uh, this has been as wet as I can remember in the 11 years I've been here, uh, he says every time they get to a point where they're ready to rip off a big section, that it's humid, and then they, they're gun-shined out, what happened the last time, so they're, they're being a little bit more cautious, which I'm okay with at this point, so, uh, but they, they feel like when they get down here, things will move a lot quicker, you know, that concrete. So, um, in your packets, you also have, on top of the field reports, two proposals from U D A, one is to proceed with, uh, chiller here at the high school repair, and some H VAC out at William Tell Elementary School, some of the replacements, as we said, we're following along with our, our building assessment, our needs assessment, so that's the big thick packet that you've got here, uh, they're proposing, uh, forty, fifty-five thousand dollars in fees for overseeing and implementing those, we'll go ahead and start designing those and working, working out those processes. And then they've also, the building, the designs that I've shared with you on the building and all the things we've got, I, I paid them upfront to kind of do some preliminaries, so we'd have an idea, at this point, they're looking for a go, no-go on the building design and implementation, and that too has been included in your package, uh, forty thousand for the fixed design fees, construction documents and engineering phase is a hundred and eighty, and then the administration phase is another fifty on top of that, so about seventy thousand dollars. We don't need to necessarily approve that or go, no-go tonight, I want you to go and take a look at it, make sure this is the way we want to proceed, this would be, the H VAC would be based on the bond we're using right now to pay for the roof and everything else, the building and everything else would be off the $10 million bond that we're looking at issuing now.
We're using, we're typically using for H VAC.
Well, hopefully, we will be using some of it for H VAC, whatever is left from the building, we could then have them extend out into more, more H VAC work.
And do they want to, is there a deadline on that?
They didn't give me a deadline, they just said, here's the proposals that we've prepared for you, so.
But we have to have that building come in, what was discussed in the previous meeting, or it's going to, all of us going to shut down and go into remasters in the, the next election. We hope it comes in where it's estimated, because if not, it's going to shut it all down. When the bids come in.
Do you want to determine if it is?
Probably yes, and they did, uh, I did provide you all with a new update with some options, so the base bid would be for the building, and then alternate A would be to include a bigger concession stand bathroom area, B could be the concession stand and some coaches' offices, and they did have the glass wall as an option in there also for the restroom. I also spoke with B S N about equipment, so I understand a little bit more about how they would fit into this situation too, uh, but that, that would come at a later phase.
Would be glass wall between the restroom room and...
And the doors, yeah, if, if that's what, if we have the money and we choose that alternate, yes, that was one thing that was asked. Last but not least, I'm going to request permission to create a new non-certified position, an A slash bus driver position, right now our program assistants come in for about five-and-a-half hours a day, that keeps them under the threshold for benefits, uh, to try and get some more bus drivers, I'd like to have them be able to get their C D L and drive the bus, come in and be an aide and then drive a bus, it'd be a full-time position, it would qualify the benefits, but I think that might open a door for a couple people that might need that.
Would you be able to budget it?
Right now, I, I mean, it's something we have to do because we're, we're struggling to find bus drivers, so.
Is everybody?
Everyone is, absolutely, uh, so it's just a way I thought maybe we can incentivize it and pick it up, pick up another bus driver or two.
Or one, and they told you they would be interested in?
I've sent out a survey to, to gauge interest, I've had one response that is interested, um, I'd really like, I don't want to have everybody do it, obviously, because we can't afford that, but I would limit it to probably two or three per, per serve, and then as people became available, we'd open that up to other people. I would create the position and the job requirements, all that, bring it to the next board meeting for approval, if you're okay with me exploring that.
Do you open it up your current program assistance?
Correct. Well, if a bus driver were currently doing it, I mean, it's going to be difficult to do a route because those are three-hour positions, so they do an hour and a half in the morning, and then an hour and a half, and it would drop there eight times, so, right now I'm looking primarily at part-time people that would like to be full-time program assistants, or the cafeteria staff that are five, five-and-a-half-hour positions, those kinds of, of jobs are what I'm looking at right now. So unless there's an objection, I'll bring that to the next board meeting for your consideration.
Now, when are you going to put the approval for the, the H V A C and all that on the agenda to go ahead and have Kerry, Universal move on?
Well, what I would like to do is add it to the agenda for, remember, we don't have a meeting next Tuesday, but Tuesday after the 26th, that's the permission to advertise the budget, it's usually a five-minute meeting, I would like to have it on there, if you guys don't mind, and that's two weeks, would that be enough time? And I think that would be okay for U D A to go ahead and get started on whatever we'd ask them to do. So I've added that to the...
Anything else? There is nothing, this needs a judge.